I would like to just say this to say a prayer for us. And, uh, please, please, in the pledge.
Gracious Father God, this is damnation. We keep coming forward with thanks here and praise and all. Uh, and we come together for me, for our children. We pray that you chest and hearts and minds for me. The God that sent him to us, that we thank you. We pray for our country and the whole, uh, citizens that's in this land. We thank you for this opportunity. And I do this by God.
Amen.
Page five.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll call maybe to order. Thank you all, coming. Uh, first item on the consent agenda is a proclamation recognizing Mental Health Month, uh, twenty twenty-one. I think it's Ms. Christina Williams. Here if you'd like to come up. Uh, she director of marketing and public relations for Life Management. And, uh, a long time friend, Ned Ailes is, uh, still there, working hard. And, uh, we appreciate, uh, what you guys say that is necessary, especially during this time of, uh, uncertainty in the last year with the pandemic. So I will, uh, like to read this proclamation. Whereas mental health is essential to everyone's overall health and well-being, and all Americans face challenges in life that can impact their mental health, especially during a pandemic. And whereas prevention is an effective way to reduce the burden of mental health conditions. And whereas there are practical tools that all people can use to improve their mental health and increase resiliency, and mental health conditions are real and prevalent in our nation. Whereas with effective treatment, those individuals with mental health conditions can recover and lead full, productive lives. And whereas each business, school, government agency, healthcare provider, organization, and citizen share the burden of mental health problems and has a responsibility to promote mental wellness and support, prevent, prevention, and treatment efforts. Therefore, I represent to hereby proclaim May twenty twenty-one as Mental Health Month in Port St. Joe, Florida. As a mayor, I also call upon the citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools in Port St. Joe to commit our community to increasing awareness and understanding of mental health, the steps our citizens can take to protect their mental health and the need for appropriate and accessible services for all people with mental health conditions. Amen.
Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am. Right, say anything. You're welcome, too.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, thank you. On behalf of Life Management Center, thank you for allowing us to come and be recognized. Uh, without overall mental health, we can't have whole body health. So it's just very important to make sure people know that resources are available for them to get help. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, too. Yes, ma'am. We can help you with that.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, next item is, uh, the, uh, along the consent agenda minutes of our regular meeting of, uh, May fourth in our joint city county workshop, which was made the eleventh. Do we have any corrections, additions, comments, or signing, uh, those items?
Give it to the group.
Okay, most by Commissioner Ashbrook. They'll approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lowry. Any discussion? Anyone have anything on those? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Those same sign and motion pass five and a. All right, Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. Several things on the agenda today. The first being ordinance five eighty-five, the large-scale planned amendment. Today is the second reading and consideration of adoption. It has been approved by D E O. Ready to go.
Okay, uh, the, uh, first reading was, uh, last meeting, I think. And, uh, so it's up for second reading and adoption. Is there a motion to that effect? Commissioner Ashbrook.
Aye.
Second by Commissioner Langston. Discussion, anyone from the other? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Those same sign, motion pass five and a.
Ordinance number five eighty-five. Ordinance amending the comprehensive plan future land use map of the city of Port St. Joe, Florida, by and through procedures required for large-scale map amendments pursuant to authority under statute, state statute, section one sixty-three point three one eight four, specifically changing parcel ID number zero three zero one three dash zero zero one R and parcel ID number zero three zero one seven dash zero zero five R from Gulf County Future Land Use Public to the City of Port St. Joe Future Land Use Public and from Gulf County Future Land Use Agricultural to City of Port St. Joe Future Land Use Low Density Residential R one and High Density Residential R three, providing for the amendment of the zoning map of the city of Port St. Joe and providing for repeal of any conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
All right, uh, Clint, if you wouldn't mind, I, I, I meant to let, uh, our engineer jump ahead a little bit. He's got another meeting, so can we put you off?
I gotta be here for the whole thing anyway.
Okay. You'd be thrown a chance.
Thank you, sir. Um, quick rundown from the list of stormwater master plans. We, the final report was submitted and approved by the water management district. We have a meeting due then on Thursday to discuss particular options and what they're willing to do funding-wise to move forward on the project. You know, just to find out what they're willing to do. Once we get that information, we'll bring it back before the council and discuss those options. Um, Port City Trail, trail construction is complete. Um, the benches are in. The only item left that blows out that grid is actually installation of a line. Right now, I don't have a confirmation on when that'll be, but I will be meeting the county tomorrow and I'll follow up and see if they have any better information on when they will be putting in that line. Um, C B G sewer. Um, as far as I know, pipe bursting started about an hour ago. Um, so they should be doing that today. I don't know what their schedule looks like for the rest of the week, but I know as of today, they didn't water it all day yesterday in preparation for this. And they started the pipe bursting thing. Essentially, there's going to be no service interrupted as part of this. I mean, whatever comes out essentially goes into the bridge. That should be a clean process as part of it.
And that pipe bursting will take approximately, how long? It's just according to what they run into or problems or?
It is. I'll have a better, better idea of problem by the end of the day to date. You know, you know, unless God knows, you know, more than I do, we don't know at this point. If I get a better idea by the end of the day, I'll at least communicate to him, you know, what we think it's going to take. But we've got an inspector on site right now, so we'll have a better idea this afternoon. Okay. Um, Long Avenue at First Street is moving forward. Um, the notice of award has been issued. So at this point, we're waiting on the contractors to secure performance and payment bonds. Send that back to us within the agreement. Once that's done, reviewed, you know, then we will be part of issuing the grant. So I know that the contractor's coming into town this week, I think, to meet with Philip, you know, to further discuss construction schedule and how they're going to start the job. So right now, we're just waiting on their information to come back. And as far as I know, everything with S R F is approved, so we're good to move forward.
We have sent them their requested documents on there. They're working through the water side, so yes, everything is moving on.
Okay. Um, N R C S free removal project is complete. Um, we'll actually have a final walkthrough. We have the N R C S there for today tomorrow afternoon just to review the ads built that we provided them. And that project should close out. Um, because they both, that project is in design. I don't have a firm date for when that design will be completed yet. By the next meeting, I should have known when it will be complete. Or that because they will be ready to be needed out. Okay. That third thing, what?
Uh, while you're up there, I was talking to John and Jim this morning about our SCOT grant for paving First Street. And, uh, we all know that there's issues that we got to figure out what they are before we spend the money to pave it. I do know we have a deadline at the end of the year for that, for that grant. And so we may be able to get a little extension, but not much. So I've asked John, he said, you guys already planned to talk about?
We already did.
Cameron and what we need to do to fix it. We may have spent our own money before we even get the grant to get that fixed, to make that pavement sustainable, I guess you would say, and lasting.
We looked at some repair options today. We actually reviewed the job, rode the job. What we'll be doing is coming up with a couple of different options for repairs over the next couple of weeks, bringing it forward. The council will decide what we want to do moving forward with repairs to get it prepared and paved.
Right. This grant's a hundred percent grant to pave, and we certainly want it to be, be right. But if we have to spend a little more money, it's still a good deal. So, uh, anyway, oh, thank you. Thank you for that. Anything else?
I have one question. Uh, which ditches were cleaned out under the, uh, N R C S removal? And how did we pick those ditches?
I don't, I'm not, as far as when the ditches were picked, I don't have that information. But it was what we deemed as Chicken House Ranch area, which was the main ditch beside the West Water Plant that goes all the way out to the intercoastal. And then the portion of it becomes back across industrial drive, going back to the south. Um, we cleaned that whole area and then the ditch portion from the park at Nineteenth Street out to Long Avenue. That were, that was a ditch. My assumption is that that's what N R C S identified, uh, post hurricane.
Yeah, I made a mention. One of the reasons we chose the location we did was because we couldn't get in there physically to clear ourselves. The grant didn't actually pave the ditch. It removed vegetation along its banks and, you know, what may have fallen across it. So it opened it up where we can get in there ourselves.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
All right. Thank you, sir. All right, Mr. Clint, let's go back to you.
All right, next thing on the agenda, Mayor, is ordinance five eighty-eight.
Were you going to talk about the in-locals?
I was after I finished everything else. Um, ordinance five eighty-eight deals with the two specific parcels of property on Harbor Street in North Port St. Joe. If you remember, I was instructed to draft an ordinance that would reduce the requirement of having twelve hundred square feet down to seven hundred square feet and also exempted those two pre-parcels only from the provision, the architectural provisions, ordinance five twenty-one. Uh, just to let the board know that this went before, after our last meeting, this went before the Planning and Development Zoning Board. And they voted unanimously not to recommend this being passed.
Okay. All right. So we have a, uh, ordinance five eighty-eight. The first reading was, uh, at our May fourth meeting. It's up for second reading and adoption. Today, uh, comments or what have you from board or from the audience? Board first.
Mayor, I have one thing. I think that the way this was handled was all backwards. This should have ever came to us to kind of vote on. Because as I see it, during voting to do this, we did the first reading. Today, we're supposed to do, you know, do our second reading and adopt. Uh, but to have a meeting between them is kind of an unneeded step. If it's required, I think it would be here at the first. We should have, we should have never heard it. That said, the way I voted the first time to go forward, I'm going to have to go forward with it. It was a lapse of judgment that we should have never heard in the first place and thought it went to people. In my opinion.
Well, and also, we were put in a bad position when the trailer company moved a trailer in there without a permit. And that puts us in a spot to start with.
And I, I may say, Commissioner, I didn't mean to interrupt, Mayor. Um, there was, the reason why is we kind of got, wanted to get this moving because if there was, if one person did already put the mobile home there, she was allegedly living in her car. So we wanted to get this done as quickly as possible. That's why it ended up going the way that it did, with us having the first reading, then going to the board. Then we're simply trying to speed the matter up.
Got you. Okay. Uh, yeah. I spoke to Ms. Farmer even about an hour ago. And, I mean, she's in a jam, no doubt.
I don't think, don't, let's not mix it up. Remember, this is Harbor Street.
Yeah. This, this, right.
Not Avenue Eight. It's Harbor Street. Oh, all right.
Yeah. Uh, but she's, she's in a jam, bottom line. Uh, ship program gave her money to put that trailer there. And they weren't within our land development regulations. And, uh, she's, she's just in a jam. And, and, uh, I really feel bad for her. This is, this is a real, real tough decision that we're going to have to make. Go ahead.
I talked to this phone. I also talked to other residents in the area. And, uh, a few of them, uh,
Oh, here, you got your mic on. It's on, it's on. Okay.
And, um, a few of them didn't agree with her having that, that trailer there. Um, and I've always been, uh, on the side of, uh, for me so much. I think, uh, the trailer company, uh, to the back of the room. Uh, and they should have, uh, knew that you had to have a permit to, to place your trailer inside of any place. I mean, this can be, you just set something up without permits. I think they gave a little bomb right up. I think, um, she should have been handling it a little better, um, as far as she'll, but that's, that's, and being able to problem on us. Have to try to help somebody out and do, if you find someone to live. But, um, like I, I said before that, it's a tough situation where you said before, a planning board, which you got set up to make decisions. And, um, there are people that's, uh, throughout the entire city of Port St. Joe that sits on your board. And they try to make decisions, um, try to give us a good, um, give us good information on what to see to make. So it is a tough situation. And, uh, planning board, I mean, we were talking, we went five, we went five, so, uh, that's how I feel right now. This is, this is going to be a tough situation. Go somewhere, just want to be upset.
Okay. Any other comments?
I'll, I'll add just a little bit. Uh, I'll speak loud while Jim gets me some batteries for this microphone. I just realized this out. Um, you know, in my mind, and you've heard me say in the past, we have a planning board to keep politics out of decisions like this. And, and I agree. And I think the planning board does a, a great job. But we have to remember their job is to look at items and say, is this proper? Does it meet the rules? Yes or no? And they came back and they said, no, it doesn't meet the rules. And I agree, it doesn't meet the rules. So then you have to look at the other side of the story. And the other side of the story is it's affecting people that had nothing to do with the deaths we're in today. We have a person that has nowhere to live. Why? Because different entities of the government made mistakes. So then you have to say, okay, we got to weigh that. Do we just follow rules? Or do we take into consideration that mistakes were made and it had nothing to do with the homeowner? They were just trying to find a place to live. So in my mind, it's easy for me to say in the past, well, I'm going to always follow the direction of the planning board. But I, I, in this circumstance, I have to go a different way because there's an individual who doesn't have a place to live. So I try to put myself in that perspective, and then it makes the decision a little easier. So I'm going to move forward and support moving forward and finding this place, uh, this lady a place to live.
Anybody else from the board? Okay. Anyone from the public? Anyone from the public?
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Paul, uh, you open that issue. Come on up, Paul. Paul.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, commissioners. That's an old saying. If y'all, a fool can tear down a barn, but it takes a wise man to build it. My name is Ross, and I live with one on Port Broad Street, Port St. Joe, Florida. On May fourth, two thousand twenty-one, your planning board met, totally discussed this matter, all of the ins and outs, the laws, the rules, the regulations, the feeling of the people, both those who, as we're saying, does not have a place to stay, a bed can differ because both parents are alive here in Port St. Joe. A sister is alive here in Port St. Joe. They all have homes. Uh, we met, and as we met, we voted unanimously not to allow this to go forward for given reasons. After the meeting was over with, one of the ladies was here, met those people who had voted against, uh, allowing her to have her trailer in Port St. Joe. And these are the words that she said to us, quote unquote, "Thank you, thank you, thank you." Because what's being offered to me is not something that I desire. Because seven hundred and fifty square feet does not allow me to even have a second bedroom that my grandkids can live with me, nor visitors with that amount of square footage. Uh, not only that, uh, I aim here is not to tear down anyone or anything, but to build. If one will suggest go over to the area in question over in Lisfield, you will see that it's an area that we've built it up. And we've built an up and area that was really torn down. Most of us is not asking for a handout. We're asking for a hand up. The difference between the two is we don't want anyone to give us anything. But if we start trying to build something decent, help us to maintain. The rules in place says, very emphatically, when Commissioner, at that time, Nathan Peters, that was over twenty years ago, was a party of an agreement to do this. And that laws to set aside this area on North, uh, Harbor Streets for trailers. But their wisdom laws, it stated what size the trailer would be. They also stated in that that it would be one-story, which was said to us that they saw a need to make sure that that area of anyone building in it would build not too small, but yet not build too large. No one has had a problem with that in all of these years. But then this situation slipped upon us. And this particular situation is causing problems between friends, people that love each other. And it ought not to have come this far. There are four different reasons I can say why it shouldn't. Number one, if the trailer people had pulled a permit, the answer would have been no. And this would not be an issue before us. If the homeowner would pull a permit, the answer would have been no. This issue would not have been before us. If the city commissioners would simply have stayed with the rules that have been in place over twenty years, then this would not be an issue between people that love each other. Number four, there is only two areas in all of Port St. Joe that you can put trailers. Both of those areas are in North Port St. Joe. Any other area in Port St. Joe that this issue would have came before them would have been a non-issue because it would have been stopped right in its strike. And that is, the first time a permit was trying to be pulled, it would have been stopped. But because now this trailer company comes in and shoves something down our throat, and we're going to back up and say that we have to accept that? I don't think so. I believe, uh, our fathers, our city commissioners have the power to say, "Mr. Trailer Man Company, you made a mistake, and you must pay for your mistake." So it's not us trying to appease a couple people. And then what about the majority of the people that's trying to build? Our area would be divided, de-devaged because of a trailer that when, if something got to bit, something happened to them, who's going to move into it? Not a family, not a couple with children. It won't fit the, uh, bill. And so we're talking about trying to give something to someone that would limit, uh, of, of future growth in our, our city. Not only that, I spoke about, uh, uh, not being a fool tearing something down. After the meeting, I did research. I have before me pictures of three different trailers that would fit the most. And those trailers, uh, if the individual was to purchase one of these, there's three of them. But there are many options out there. This is just three. And those options are this. A trailer costing sixty-nine thousand nine hundred dollars plus tight would be seventy-four thousand seven hundred ninety-three dollars. With the forty-five thousand dollars from the grant would leave a balance of them financed at twenty-nine thousand seven hundred ninety-three dollars, yielding a monthly payment over three, uh, fifteen years of two hundred and thirty-five dollars a month. Two more trailers that fit the bill that cost ninety thousand dollars. And if you add the taxes, uh, the taxes to it, and you subtract the forty-five, uh, hundred thousand dollars from it, the payment is only three hundred and fifty dollars a year for fifteen years. One of these individuals that we're talking about was renting from me. Six hundred and fifty dollars a month. Three hundred and fifty you're going to make as a payment? That would give you money for a, uh, for the utilities. So I don't think we should yield to the pressure of an outsider who is coming here to grab something down our throat. So my, at my, my quest to you all today, commissioners, is please, don't take no as I answer saying, no, we don't want these individuals to have a place to stay. We are requesting that all of us get together and give them a better place to stay. If you just simply give people and they don't have to pay anything, you know what the statement was made? Anything is better than nothing. That's the attitude of this latest because they're in a jam. Anything is better than nothing. But we on the outside should see, we can't just accept anything in our community, especially a community that is trying to build itself up. Thank you.
Paul?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, commissioners. I'm Joe Paul. I'm the director of the ship and H H R P program for Gulf County. I have some rebuttal to what Mr. Ross Leslie said. And I could not hear everything Mr. Langston said, but I couldn't hear him at all in the back, even when you turned his mic up. So I, I didn't, I, I heard you say something about maybe there were some complaints and things that I?
I complained from neighbors.
From some neighbors that lived there?
Yeah. I also said that, um, uh, when the process, um, someone in ship may have dropped the phone.
Uh, and, and that could very well be true because when we found out the trailer was on the lot, I had sent the contractor four different messages and emails to get the permit. And I called him right away. I said, what do you put this trailer on the lot for? Because we did not have a schedule the trailer was going on the lot. In fact, we were receiving trailers up in the Weewaw area, getting them checked in. And the guy setting up the trailer said, I'm going down to set up the one in Port St. Joe here on Friday. I said, you didn't deliver that one to Port St. Joe? And he said, yeah. He said, the company delivered. So I'm immediately on the phone to the guy from Timberline Construction Group saying, "You got to pull this permit." I was not aware of your L D R that showed twelve hundred square feet. Okay? I never thought about it. I never looked at it. Once I called the building department and said, followed up to make sure if they'd even attempted to pull the permit, was when I was informed that there was an L D R that said twelve hundred square feet. Since then, I knew we were in trouble. Okay? My only thing to do then was to go on the offensive and see what we could do to get it done. If we can't, we're going to pull the trailer off the lot. I would sincerely hope, number one, that the lady we're trying to help was not the one that made the comment, "This is not what I want." Because that comment's never been made to us from the first day when we actually told those residents they were going to get a one-bedroom trailer, a one-bedroom bubble home. Commissioners, Mr. Mayor, if you'd like to go look at that trailer, it happens to be a two-bedroom. Why? Because the manufacturer quit making one bedrooms. And the last trailers we delivered here were two-bedroom trailers, and they came in under our budget of $45,000. That's a two-bedroom trailer sitting over there. If it was a one-bedroom trailer, it'd be 520 square feet. My thing is, yes, the contractor made a mistake. We tried our best to follow up with him, and he knows he's going to have to bear the burden of moving the trailer, setting it up somewhere else. We have other residents outside of Port St. Joe that would love to have that trailer, and we can move it. But I firmly believe we have a resident right here in this room that needs a place to live. And number two, I'm not trying to shove anything down anybody's throat. These trailers are the best we could buy? Yes, we could buy the ones for $90,000. The majority of the people that we're assisting are very low-income people. That means if they're a single person, they make less than $20,000 a year. Twenty thousand five hundred's are capped for very low income. Most of them, I firmly believe, would not have the ability or the finances to obtain credit to buy one of these. I would ask that, number one, let me say this before I say that. When I found out about the issue with the LDRs, I actually called the city, I spoke with Ms. Charlotte. We talked about going to the PDRB first. I said, "Please tell me what I need to do." I said, "And I'll be happy to come to your next commission meeting and talk with them about it." The next thing I know, I'm on the agenda, which is perfect. That's why I came to you, that's why I brought that to you, that's why your ordinance 588 was started. Yes, it was done before the PDRB. If I'd have been told to go to the PDRB first, I would have done that. But I firmly believe that the thinking was that we could get this taken care of, and that it wouldn't be the issue that it's been going on this long. I, for one, feel for each one of you as the commissioners having to make this decision because of your constituents. I would not want to be in any one of you five gentlemen's shoes or seats right now. But as the person standing here that has a sincere compassion for the people that need homes, I would recommend and strongly encourage you to approve this ordinance to allow this bubble home to be on the lot. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A question... Yes, sir.
During the time when Ms. Malone was trying, you know, when you was helping her to get this trailer, did you ask her, could she afford to get somebody to finance or help her finance it? Because she was trying to ask herself.
We talked about that with every one of ours.
You did, you did tell her that she did something better, that she could finance for more.
Her income did not allow her to get purchase assistance through the county's ruling on the funding. Okay, since this all happened, my assistant, Ms. Lynn Lanier, has spoken with Ms. Malone, your Ms. Farmer, Ms. Malone, same person. And we asked her then if she had anybody that could assist her. Because I was willing to go to the board next Tuesday and say, "Hey, can we make this $45,000 purchase assistance if the people can afford to get a trailer?" I was willing to do that. She informed Ms. Lynn Lanier that she did not have the means to secure a loan or anybody to help her in getting financed. Now, let me tell you this, there's one-bedroom trailers out there again. They're 520 square feet. They're even smaller than the two-bedroom that's sitting over there on that lot. And I know that the Board of County Commissioners is going to discuss what to do because the price of lumber has gone up three times since all this started. And that one-bedroom, 504-square-foot trailer is $51,875. Now, that includes the pad, bringing it, tying it down, hooking it up to water, sewer, and that stuff. It doesn't include tap fees, but hooking it up, it's $51,875. That's the very best price I can get.
I have one other question.
Yes, sir.
I just took the time to watch a meeting that took place at the county, I believe it was yesterday, and they discussed at least the issue that you just explained. And what is happening is, in my mind, sometimes I think in things very simple terms, but in my mind, they're not giving up money to afford what the people need to live in. Now, I saw where the county had, I believe, $5.9 million in this program. And there was some discussion about how do we solve the problem that we're only allocating a small amount of money, and we get more small trailers. Now, I think one way to look at solving the problem is you give more money, and you have fewer places to live, but they're nicer places, and there's not an issue with neighbors, there's not an issue of value of property going down. And I think they're going to start some type of dialogue about solving the problem. And in my simple mind, you have to give more money to each individual. And I'm hoping that that will be the future. But currently, today, that's really not what we're discussing because if we vote no on this particular issue, then we're right back at square one. And the person that needs a place to live is out of a place that much longer.
We have actually been tasked with putting together a proposal for the board meeting next Tuesday. We've had discussions, but I'm not at liberty to say anything until I can get the proposal ready and meet with each one of the commissioners individually and get it before the board. But I don't disagree with what you're saying.
Any other questions?
I just got one more, I don't know if I made sure I got it right. So you did say you offered Ms. Malone, she could have got some assistance, you know, could have came up and get some of you?
What I did say, what Ms. Lynn Lanier said, was that if she had somebody that could help her to co-sign or do something to get a loan, that we would take it before the board and see if they would allow that to happen. And if the board agreed to the $45,000 as a purchase assistance versus versus just the home, then we'd be ready to go.
Anything else?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Ms. Backroyd, next.
As someone who has sat on the PDRB board, and I know you very much, I didn't have all the proof that the trailer company actually, who is supposed to be the expert, just arbitrarily came and dropped her trailer. That is their problem. And I'm wondering if there's a way to run a parallel process. This woman needs a place to live. We all have compassion. She shouldn't be living out of her car. But Clint, I'm wondering if because they did not follow the rules of our LDR, if there's something that can be done to give her a place temporarily and then go after this trailer company? Because as you recall, Mr. Mayor, out on Garrison, there was someone that came in in the middle of the night and set up a modular home, and everyone was outraged about it. Well, it ended up their engineer wasn't, didn't have the licenses. And that's how that was moved. I think there have been so many missteps. And once again, I'm sorry that the ship program didn't have all the information. And I'm sorry that the trailer company decided to just do what they wanted to do. But I'm here for a third time to say, we are the citizens of Port St. Joe. And for people to continue to think we're too stupid to understand what is right and what isn't, it's not fair for that lady, and it's not fair for the neighbors, and it's not fair for our future. So they've got the deepest pockets, the trailer company. And if they're running and doing trailers up in Weewaw, I would think they want our business. It's time to hold people accountable.
Mr. Leslie, you had one more comment?
Yes.
Please.
Mr. Mayor, commissioners. Having a program such as the ship program, and you're going to offer a service to the community, and you don't know the criteria before you venture into it? That is not the citizens over in Lyssville problem. That's not our problem that he didn't know about the LDR. It's not our problem that the trailer company would do what they did. And that's what I understood, something in Weewaw, that the same company is doing trailers that wouldn't meet the criteria. And so my statement is this, there was no rush over at 102 Stone Drive. It took over a year for them to resolve that problem. Why should we rush when we can just wait to see whether what Mr. Paul is saying might come to pass? And that is that Mr. Nene be given the right to use that money and put money with it to get a trailer. Because I still maintain $350 a month, $350 a month. Having paid $650 a month, I believe you can afford that, because it would also help any utilities.
Okay, anybody else? Yes, ma'am, come up.
I understand what Mr. Roberts is saying, he right, you know what I'm saying? But wait, that's the problem, wait. I've been waiting four months, when it's supposed to have been one week. I'm tired of living with my sister, she's tired of me living with her. Yes, my parents do live there, but that's their house. I want my own privacy. I have stuff up under my mama garage, my mattresses, I'm needed doing. I have stuff at the golf house where I work it, I got to get that stuff out there before the state come in. I have a shed, it's full. I have stuff scrolled all over Port St. Joe, I had to go buy clothes for the summer because I don't know where they at, I don't know if they're here, there, there. You know what I'm saying? I want my own privacy. It's, I can see if I put the trailer in. They told me to fill out an application that I was eligible, and they put the trailer there. So the trailer is there, you know what I'm saying? Why I can't live in it, you know what I'm saying? I didn't put it there, I was offered it, it was given to me. If somebody give you something, if you come to my food center and you buy, and I give you hot wings, but you want lemon pepper, what you going to do? You going to take the hot one? Because I gave them to you. Yes, okay, don't make the requirement, but it's not my fault, I didn't do it. I had a place, I was living, I was comfortable in my own apartment. I gave up my apartment for this trailer. Now I ask him, "Do you have somewhere for me to go?" "No." "Okay, well, you don't have nowhere for me to go, so what I supposed to do? What do I supposed to do? My car is full, I'm living in my car, now I get clothes and stuff out of my car." I'm tired of living like that for the last four months. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Oh, please, dude.
Okay, wing.
Okay, all right. Please come up, Mr. Field.
I've signed him in, Eddie Field, 105 Dallas Street, Port St. Joe. I was sitting there, everybody, everybody, good points, good points. Rules, policies, and regulations, good point. I mean, I'm sitting there, I'm saying, "Eddie don't say nothing," but I just feel from this alone, this lady is out, she has nowhere to live because of mistakes of somebody else. We, I mean, like I said, we met some time ago talking about the same issue. Thankfully, the attorney came up with an ordinance to try to solve this. The Planning and Zoning Committee, I said, "We're planning and zoning that much code." The Planning and Zoning Committee, they're just doing their job, they're following the rules, regulations, and procedures. And like Ms. Malone said, she's tired of staying with her mom or sister, she's like, "There were people, clothes here and there, I can understand their mode of marriage because I've had stuff, I had a little brother." The main thing, me, is speaking, and Mr. Joe Paul was doing a bridge, y'all. I've worked with Mr. Joe Paul doing with the ship, the CCGL with the ship, and during Hurricane, long-term recovery, Hurricane took everything out. Left people homeless, we put tarps on homes, homes was leaking, people are still not in their homes. I'm still working on mine. And this lady is out of a home. Everybody I think came up and said something in her home. Me, with the ship program, CCGL, long-term, is based on low to moderate income. Low to moderate income. That means I don't have a pile of money in the bank, I don't have a pile of money here in my pocket. Those are the people we try to help. And when you help someone like that, like all of them between a rock and a hard place right now, even planning and zoning between rock and hard place, because they're living in the neighborhood, and they fighting against this lady, the other trailer here. My suggestion always been, I don't like trailers, marginal home. This lady needs somewhere to stay, well, for trailer, marginal home, or something, she can be in there somewhere to stay. Like she said, her own place to stay, where she could put her own stuff in the house. The thing what I say, everyone, everyone, put yourself in that position. Right after Hurricane, you want to think back too far, think about where would you be? We know people that live in tents, veterans living in tents, veterans living up on the top. This lady needs somewhere to stay, she has a family. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, gentlemen, I think enough discussion now on that. And I'll entertain a motion for the second reading and consideration of adoption. Moved by Commissioner Ashbrook, is there a second? I hear a second.
Second to the agreement.
Okay, oh, second for discussion, I want you...
Yeah, second for discussion.
Okay, there's a second for discussion, okay. Discussion, we've had a lot of discussion.
I want to just make sure that I'm clear in my mind. If we approved it and move forward and adopt 588, then we are allowing a exception to the 1,200-square-foot for those two parcels only, correct?
Correct.
It also exempts them from ordinance 521, architectural, you have to put porch on it and stuff like that.
Sure, yeah, yeah. And I'll say this, as Mr. Field said, there have been very good arguments on both sides. But, and we can go legally after the trailer company, we can do this, we can do that. While we're doing this, this lady's out of a place to live. And that's a conundrum we find ourselves in. And I will just have to say this. would just have to say this, I've been on this board, I guess, twelve, thirteen years now, I've, I've never voted against the, uh, PDRB recommendation, and, uh, but, but today, in this case, in the way the resolution ordinance written, I'm gonna have to vote against the, uh, PDRB recommendation. So.
Yes.
So, basically, this is saying that, uh, nobody can come and say, look, they got their own, got their own, I want to admit them.
I, I can't say that someone's not gonna come up and say that, but we would have to go through this process, because this ordinance only allows it of those particular two parcels of property.
Commissioner, but there, I, I'd say there was a reason why we did this, I mean, I mean.
We, we've done other things to help storm-related situations throughout the city, uh, matter of fact, there's another one on the, uh, agenda for today, so we're still fighting those, uh, issues and trying to get the city back, uh, back going like it was before the storms, so, I think if you, that's what you possibly are leaning to, that we, we just hadn't bend rules a little bit, whether we like them or not. So, anyway, uh, is your second stand, Commissioner Hoppe?
It does, the other thing I'd like to point out is, I know in the past, we, we even talked about, um, coming up with an ordinance that says we can't change these, or make up new ordinances in the future, and I made the comment that, that I would support, uh, like, it would take a super majority, or now dealing with what we're dealing with today, I would be willing to support, it would take, uh, language that would say it would take a unanimous vote to approve any mobile home, or, or any change to the existing rules. Uh, and, and I think that a way it would, would make it much more complicated, because currently, all you need is three votes, you can do anything with three votes, but if we agreed to have language that said, if we're gonna go against the recommendation of the planning board, it would take a, it would take a majority vote, uh, one, one person voted against it, it would be a dead, dead issue, and I would still support that, uh, I think it would help us in the future.
If you want to, uh, add that to the agenda for the next meeting, we'll do that.
All right, let's do that, Jim.
Okay. All right, any more discussion? All in favor, Rod?
Aye.
Same sign, and most have passed five and oh, and this farmer can get her trailer going and have a place to live.
Ordinance number 588, an ordinance of the city of Port St. Joe, Florida, amending the city of Port St. Joe land development regulations, providing for less restrictive land uses under Article Three, Section 3.03, District R1, in specifically defined areas, providing for exemption from ordinance 521 in specifically defined areas, providing for repeal of all ordinance or parts of ordinance in conflict herewith, providing for separability, providing for applicability, and providing for an effective date.
Right. Moving along, Mr. Clinton.
Uh, the next thing on the agenda is, um, it's entitled bond council. As, as the board is aware, the county has, um, begun the process of being in the water business, and we do have, um, extreme amount of debt as regards to our water service areas and the things that we've done to be able to provide to those areas. We feel, staff and I feel, that it is important and that we should, um, it's an obligation, we have to notify our creditors that that is going on, and we would like to, um, engage outside council, bond council, to help us with that endeavor, and who we've chosen, maybe Jim can kind of give a description of who he is and what his relationship was to the field group before.
Back in 2013, the city acquired.
Everybody hear what he's saying? Okay, Jim, you need to get a mic going or something.
Back in, back in 2013, the city engaged bond council to, uh, transfer the bonds over to the Regents Bank. Uh, bond council has, has knowledge of all the pledge funds that we have for the city of Port St. Joe, how they're tied into the revenues in those unincorporated areas, so we feel it's, it's vital that we need to engage those folks to go back, pull those folders out, and, uh, give some legal counsel to the city of Port St. Joe.
Okay. Uh, you know, as city commissioners, we're, we're definitely obligated to protect assets of the city, uh, and I do, I do agree that, that we need, uh, some outside counsel to help us, uh, our current attorney felt this was important, uh, we, we don't have anybody, we've reached out to this one group that helped us before, I don't know if we've heard back from them or not, have we, Jim, is, if they're, uh, willing to help us, but we thought it's important to bring it up to the board, uh, today, uh, so we can discuss it and understand, uh, what we need for our own protection. So, I love that before.
I don't disagree, uh, Jim, you mind mentioning who it is?
It's Brett Miller and Olive out of Tallahassee.
Who are they?
Brett Miller and Olive out of Tallahassee.
From out of Tallahassee, a gentleman that, uh, was instrumental in this before, I think his name's George Smith, he came down and, and worked us through all these issues. So, uh, anyway, we, we hope that he wanted to help us again, because they have a lot of, a lot of knowledge about, already about what's going on. Uh, other comments?
I've, I've got a couple ideas that I'd like to at least get on the record, be brought up. Um, we went to the workshop, uh, was it last week?
Yes, last Tuesday.
And I left the workshop confused as to what the future plans of the county even are, and I say that in regards to, I sat there in the meeting, and I heard one county commissioner say, "We're not going to do anything that would hurt the city of Port St. Joe." And he went on to say, "We want to supply better water, cheaper water, to the Cape and Indian Pass, and maybe Howard's Creek, because it's landlocked." And I told him, I said, "Well, that's good to hear, I, I hope the best for you," and I even told him he can have Stone Mill Creek. But the point that I was making was, and if anyone on this board disagrees, I'd like to hear from you as to why you would disagree with this idea. What we have to safeguard is the future customers within our service area, where we already have water. Our price of water is high, projected to go higher based on the rate study, but it also incorporates the future customers. So, with that in mind, go back to this meeting, the workshop. I then later heard a county commissioner say they would not support anything that would be detrimental to the city of St. Joe, or cost us the city of St. Joe jobs. Well, in my mind, if you take away future customers, you will in fact have a negative impact to the city of St. Joe. If anyone doesn't agree with that, I'd like to understand your train of thought, because in my mind, if you take away those future customers that our rate study incorporates just to hold the line, then we are going to suffer. Then later toward the end of the workshop, I heard the county administrator say, and I went back and watched the meeting again to make sure I didn't misspeak, I heard that the county administrator say, "In three to five years into the future, these county commissioners will not be able to tell their constituents that we won't sell down water in all of the areas." So, I'm then thinking, well, your own county commissioners are confused as to what your plans are, that's what I took away from that meeting. Then we get this interlocal agreement idea today that, or no, the one that they had posted, they posted a while back, and we, and we had trouble getting the actual copy of it. I read it to say, they're asking, and their plans are to be allowed to sell water to anywhere outside the incorporated city limits of Port St. Joe and the city of Weemaw, Higco. And folks, if that's their plan, and I believe it is, it will have a huge negative impact on the city of Port St. Joe. And as a city commissioner, the people that I'm representing, and the ones in the city, and the ones we sell water to outside the city, uh, how we can look at this in any other light confuses me. So I, I would like to give everyone up here the opportunity to either say, yes, I agree with you, Scott, or no, you're mistaken, you're looking at it wrong, and, and explain to me why I'm looking at it wrong. I think if the county gets what they want, it will cost people jobs in the city of St. Joe, and it will increase the customers that we currently sell water to, their bill will increase by leaps and bounds. So, I think we need to hire this, this firm, and we need to be ahead of this issue, because it's gonna get ugly. If we think back fourteen, fifteen years ago, there were commissioners sitting on the city commission, and they had information that made them believe there was gonna be this crazy growth, and, and all these houses were gonna be built, and I believe they did what they thought was best. We now know it was a huge mistake, because the houses did not come, the growth did not come, and we're sitting here paying a bill of twenty-one million dollar water plant that's way bigger than we ever needed. So, a mistake was made, and I think if we project ourselves in the future, and we don't fight this, they're going, the, the commissioners in the future are gonna be looking back saying, what in the heck were they thinking? They sold us out to the county, and we have to do what we need to do. I'm ready to draw a line in the sand and say, no, you're not gonna do it, and, and the way to fight it, and I'm not part of this firm in Tallahassee, but if I was part of the legal team that's gonna fight it, you fight the funding, cut the funding out, and while we're talking about funding, I'd like to point out one thing, I saw two letters, two documents that talk about how they managed their funding. One of them was the county's, I believe it's a five-year plan, they put on that document that they were asking for somewhere in the neighborhood thirty million dollars to build a backup water system, to help the city of Port St. Joe. Thirty million dollars for a backup system. Now, usually, you build a backup system because your system is faulty. You, you don't have a backup air conditioner at your house unless the one you got's a piece of crap and it goes out all the time. Well, the city of St. Joe, after a category five hurricane, we were down less than twenty-four hours. So, that is null and void in my mind, that request. The second request I saw just the other day, where it was a, a, a letter saying, "We anticipate to give you this amount of money." The county and the city is all there, the money going to the city, I have no problem with the way that we asked for that money. It's legitimate, it's honest. The county, according to the letter I saw, it said, "We're gonna give the county seven million dollars for a booster pump." Now, this would be a booster pump, or booster plant, to help get the water from the water system that they bought, which is Lighthouse Utilities. They bought that system after the hurricane. So, they're telling the funding source, "We need money to help," and, and you gotta remember now, all this money is because of hurricane loss. They bought the system after the hurricane, and now they want to ask the state and the feds to give us a bunch of money, seven million dollars to help what they bought. And I'm thinking, I don't think you can do that. Anyway, I say all that to focus on this funding, stop the funding, make it be legitimate, honest, and forthright. If they can get the money from the state under those terms, I have no problem, until they try to sell water in the areas that we service water. That's all I have.
All right. Bye.
I don't think there's anything else left to say.
Well said.
When Winkle Hammond brought up forty thousand customers, what they're planning for, the only need for forty thousand customers to be a group plan in a manifest destiny of all Gulf County, the only, only reason you need forty thousand customers.
So, we're on bond council, uh, our attorney and our city manager will, will, uh, have reached out to them, they're supposed to get back to us, and as soon as we notice, they know something, we'll know it. And if I have to call a special meeting to, uh, approve or what have you, we'll do that. But, uh, hopefully, before this week's out, we'll, we'll, we should know something. So, anybody else got anything on that? Oh, please come up.
I just have a quick question. I've read the silly resolution that the county put together, and there's just no other way to describe it. When you say you want to go after all unincorporated areas, and our water system is servicing some of those unincorporated areas, I mean, that's just hammer, nail, it's right there. Uh, but, so, are they going to go through another reading of this resolution? Are they?
No, there's an ordinance, and they haven't, they haven't passed it yet. I, I think their next meeting is on the agenda to vote on the ordinance.
So, that's very soon.
Yes, yeah, I think it's in the next week.
Yeah, and, and so, is the law firm going to be helping the city not lose customers?
Oh, that's, I, I think that's the absolute reason to get about.
I, I just, I'll never forget, and it was the first time I ever met you, it was 2010, over at the Centennial Building, when you had a workshop, and our water rates were going up, and, you know, a lot of people showed up. You know, we had trouble with there that was responsible for that water plant, and giving us, now we need a new distribution system, and so we invested in all of that. Matt Marshall made a lot of money off that water plant, and I just hope that we're going to fight, all of us, tooth and nail, to make sure that this does not, again, make us have to short shoulder the burden, financial burdens for all of us. I mean, we just had a county person who messed up, and we're having to suck up his mess up. This isn't right, it's got to stop.
We, in the Tuesday meeting, uh, there's a interlocal agreement amending from 2013 that supposedly protected our area, that was going to be attached to that ordinance, is that correct, Clint?
Yes.
That, but.
It was 2008.
Eight, that was. But, being, that being said, is the reason we went to council, is we want to make sure that our service area is protected, it's simple as that. I mean, it can't, we can't boil it down any simpler than that, so, so that's what we gotta do.
I'm gonna, yeah, and, and, I agree, we do need to protect that, um, but, one thing we're gonna continue to get hammered on is our rates.
Yep.
Every week, I know each and every one of us get called, so we're gonna have to figure out a way to reduce our rates.
And, and I encourage every one of us to think outside the box, and think of ways that we can generate some funds that will take the pressure off the, the water budget, and allow us to at least stabilize the rates we have now, or, or reduce them. So, I'm, I'm working on something right now, I'm just not bringing it up, because it will be here till midnight, but, but, uh, but anyway, I've got some ideas, and I encourage you guys to come up some out-of-the-box thinking ideas about, uh, how we can raise some funds without just having grant after grant, but raise some funds that will be a continuous influx of revenue for us, that will take the pressure. that will take the pressure off our current budget, off the water. If we do it off, you know, the budget's a share game anyway. You move stuff around, but it's still a pot of money. If we can take the pressure off that pot of money and have another revenue source, then we can stabilize or reduce, that's my thought.
Mr. Mayor, I'll remind you, everyone, that at the beginning of our workshop, when the assistant county administrator, Mr. Smallwood, explained that they were asking for the $7 million with plans to build this booster system. Because he said, we can't get enough water, and mainly enough pressure, from the city. And I get that. And then the city offered, through the mayor, to run a larger line from our water plant to the connection there at John's Homestead, and not only supply them with all the water they could ever need and all the pressure they could ever need, but you went as far as to say, the more water you buy, the lower the rate would be. So the city has been more than willing to work with the county. If they're being honest, and their intention is just to help the people on the Cape and Indian Pass, I think we can solve that issue. But again, I don't believe that's their true intention at all. The true intention is to sell water throughout the county. And if we allow them to do that, it will really hurt the city, and it will hurt the people that are still on the city water system.
Okay, while we're on this, let's jump to the interlocal agreement before we do the trailer policy, if that's all right with you.
That's fine with me.
And everybody got a copy of that interlocal that was presented at 2:00 just this afternoon from the county, without any input from our city attorney. I've got a couple of concerns, maybe three, on that interlocal agreement, number three, four, and five, those three. So I would like to say, if agreement with you guys, let Clint take it back, work with the county attorney, and see if we can come up with an interlocal agreement that we can all agree on, that everybody's okay with that. And any other issue you have, please.
Relate.
Please, yeah. And so he can work, I mean, the whole intent was, and I'm pretty sure I asked you at that meeting, that you guys are going to work together to draft an interlocal agreement. So hopefully, y'all can get together and draft.
I can give you a quick synopsis of how.
Okay, please do.
At the meeting, and as far as the annexation goes, I think we all left there feeling that we were working together, and things were heading in the right direction. Jeremy mentioned several times that me and him would go ahead and put, work together to draft this interlocal agreement. That was Tuesday. At the end of the meeting, he said that he would give me something by the end of the evening. Well, that didn't happen. And then yesterday, at 2:01 Eastern, he emailed me and Jim a copy of the proposed, I like to call it settlement agreement, not interlocal agreement. I quickly reviewed it in about the 15 minutes that I had, and at 2:23 emailed him, basically saying that I had a problem with just paragraph number four. I got a couple other concerns after since reading it. But specifically with that, he left me a phone message at my office. I had stepped out, he didn't try and get ahold of me on my cell, saying that the mayor had specifically agreed to number four in the agreement. So I never actually talked to him. And then, less than an hour and a half later, the county voted to approve it. And without me ever having spoken with Jeremy about it, other than email and him leaving me a phone message. So that's all that, that's where it was.
And I spoke to Chairman Quinn today and relayed to him that I did not make a statement to bind our hands for future annexation.
I watched through this morning.
And since attorneys watched the tape of it again, what I said was, we will work with y'all on any topic at any time. They won't take that broad statement to mean that.
Have a problem with that, but anyway.
And I went and watched it, right, when I got the email before the meeting. And I don't think you necessarily said that, but it was just vague, you know, you just said it vaguely. And we can talk about anything, and it, don't hold our feet to the fire, you know?
Yeah, and it was right at the end of the meeting, and he said, well, can we have a workshop? And I, you know, I said, we can talk about anything at any time. And so I hate that they're trying to push that into them, because especially an attorney, maybe they want stuff vague, I don't know. I don't think, I don't think you'd rather.
The word workshop was never mentioned. The word workshop was never mentioned. It was just, we have discussions in the future.
So anyway.
Nothing about a mandatory.
Neither here nor there, I just want to clear that up. So anyway, I hope you guys can work together and get this thing going. I mean, we just need to move on, just like the mobile home issue. We've got other things we need to do.
Well, the key to this, in my mind, is, in the workshop, because I was there too, it was agreed that the two attorneys, one for the county, one for the city, would come to, come together and work on the language of an ordinance or an agreement. And our attorney had zero input on this one. That's a clue, that it's trying to be written one-sided. So I'm fine with what you have suggested, because if it comes to a vote today, I would vote no to any kind of agreement with the county. So I'm fine with it, we want to work on some language.
I'll get on the phone with him today.
Anybody else? All right, moving on, resolution, travel trailer policy.
All right, Mayor, as you're aware, and the rest of the board is aware, I was instructed to draft a policy whereby any lot in the city limits of Port St. Joe that had a home that was totally destroyed on it, that if someone wanted to build back on that lot as a way to help facilitate that, the board would pass this resolution, allowing them, under numerous certain criteria, to be able to live in a travel trailer on that specific lot in the rear of the property until they got, their construction was completed. The way that I did it was, beginning June 1st, there's a one-year window of time for people to initiate that process. And from the time that they set the trailer there, and have done all the criteria that's listed in here, that they have 18 months to finish construction. And at the end of that 18 months, whether construction's finished or not, you're going to have to remove, not remove the travel trailer, but not live in it, cease living in it anymore.
Right, right. I appreciate you taking all our input and putting it in the document. I like it, specifically because there's so many hoops you got to jump through. I don't think any people want to jump through them to get on, you know, get them a travel trailer there. And so, but if it'll help build the city back, get the stuff back and have them all intact and controlled, I think this is about as tight and as fair as you can get it. So I'm ready to move on.
Is there any, I did understand that the building department had some concerns. Is there anything that you'd like to add to this before the board passes it?
I would suggest adding a private website plan to show where you want to place the RV information. Also, with IMC, we already require a contractor, you know, owner and contractor of our owner's personal residence. So that, you know, the situation, that was just a question. I didn't know there was a requirement.
I see your point.
Can you repeat what you said, because I couldn't really hear what you said.
What she basically said, in C, 4C, excuse me, I got the, actually, numbers wrong. 3C, it says, present a signed contract with a Florida licensed contractor for construction of a new home of the subject personal property. What she's saying is, somebody might come in and pull their own permit, and they may build their own. Is that what you're basically saying?
Well, how would you, how would you change that? If we could do it without coming back to another meeting?
I can fix that. Right off the top of my head, it could be, and/or if you pull up your own contract. I can get.
Well, I mean, not a signed contract with a licensed contractor. So you're saying that someone is going to build their own home so they don't have to have a signed contract?
In fact, it would just be not a requirement for the owner, which is how we do it now.
Clint, wouldn't just having B and deleting C cover it? If they present a valid building permit, they have to have had a signed contract with the contractor who holds permits themselves, so it really kind of covers itself.
Delete C?
Delete C.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good. The way I read it, under 2, it says, the building department will determine if a particular parcel of property qualifies in its sole discretion. So I guess the.
What does that mean?
Tasking the building department.
I'm trying to make it so that doesn't, every time one of these comes up, we don't have to come in front of the board. That's what I was trying to do with that.
Well, and that's the way I read it. But I want to point out, I think we need to make sure that this board is going to let the building department do their job and not start getting all these calls. Because I know that one person in particular has already called the building department, was rude and arrogant, in my opinion, as to telling them they didn't know what they were talking about. They thought that this was passed a couple weeks ago. And now, when I read that, I'm thinking, so you called the building department, you were ugly with them, told them they didn't know what they were doing, and now you got to go to the building department and ask for this permit, which says they have the sole discretion. So I like the language, I just want to make sure that they understand the building department is a function and an arm of the city, and they need to.
And what that clause, what I'm trying to convey there is, that the building department is the sole, if their sole discretion can determine whether that parcel of property qualifies, by looking at the FEMA records, whether there was actually a home on that lot that was destroyed.
Well, no, really, yeah, we don't want something open ending that would.
Any lot. Any lot in town.
Not only that, we've sitting here, it's got to be placed at the rear of the property in there, and that's okay with you. I mean, not a specific place, but just at the rear of the property, not the left part, not a part of the right part. And that, okay, you go with that, okay. And so, and so, and so now, when somebody's going to do this, they got to go to the building department, get a permit to build their house, and they're going to pay fees for that. But they don't have to pay a fee to put the trailer on their property.
Not according to this.
Okay, that's fine. I don't think they should have to do it twice.
Yeah, I think, did we agree to have to pay the tax fee?
Oh, yeah. It says that they have, it says they have to be hooked up to everything. And have their own garbage can.
Yes.
Okay, all right.
So saying, just saying, so this thing will expire, May 31st, 22.
No, what expires on May 31st, 22, is the ability to do it.
Yes.
If you get in there and get the trailer on.
You'll have 18 months to build your house.
From the time you put the trailer on.
Yeah.
But you have, but there's a window of time open for the next year.
Yeah, that's Commissioner Hoffman liked that idea, and that was fun, too.
As far as our old ordinance that we had, our post-storm trailer ordinance, what happens to the people that still have trailers based off that old?
What is the?
That was, there wasn't a specific ordinance on it, that was a policy.
And the reason I asked, and I asked Kelly to come here, is there's still some trailers in town, inside yards and front yards.
At this point in time, what that was, it expired. They, y'all gave them six more months, several months back. So at this point in time, I don't think there's.
Do you have a count?
I think there are maybe three that are still active based on the last.
Yeah.
That actually reapplied.
We'd have to go back.
You'd have to go back and look at it again, but there are a couple that were still under that window.
Give it a little bit more time.
Yeah. And then the next question is, the enforcement arm of this, will this fall under RICHIE, this code enforcement, at the end of the 18 week or 18 months?
If they're still living in the trailer, in the travel trailer, yeah. The old enforcement violence.
Or the building department could put a cease order to the building of the house till the trailer's gone. And then that's, that's why the key is the building department. Because if we didn't tell them, hey, they have violated by not leaving, put a cease order, and when they stop being able to build that house, they'll find another place to live.
And you're allowed to have a travel trailer parked on your house.
As long as you're not living in it.
As long as it has a valid tag and registration and everything. You just got to cease living in it.
Correct. Okay, entertaining motion for Resolution 2021-07. It's different in the agenda, but the resolution itself is 2021-07.
Go with the deletion section.
3C.
See, my numbers are a little wrong, I'll fix that as well.
Okay, motion to approve with the deletion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. And more discussion. All in favor, I, at the same time, most passed by. All right.
Resolution 2021-07, a resolution of the city of Port St. Joe, Florida, implementing a temporary moratorium on the city's ban on living in a travel trailer or recreational vehicle on parcels of property located within the city limits, providing for specific criteria for the parcel of property to qualify, providing for specific requirements for which the owners of the qualifying parcels must comply, providing for specific time deadlines, and providing for an effective date.
All right, get that off the list.
And I believe that's all I have.
You have enough tonight. All right, Mr. Jim.
Yes, sir, Mayor, the first time under old business is the current city projects. If you turn over to page 48 and 49, you will see the project list that we're working on and the items that's been completed.
Venice Court pickleball are looking great. According to Mike earlier, it looks like they have lighting on Venice Court before long also, so we're getting there. All right, new business.
New business. The first item is July 4th, events, July 4th is fast approaching. We're only about a month and a half out, so it is getting here close. Had a couple of discussions with Commissioner Langston about events that are coming forward on there, that he wanted to further discussion today on for the street dance and some possibility of some events going on in Washington, June.
I talked with Ms. Kim Bolivian about it. She said it was fine, but I told her that we have a security plan. I want to get the security plan together, or, um, my plan's going to last. And, um, I could number people that they're going to have a visit with. So until they give you that, and I get back with Ms. Kim Bolivian, we won't go in further.
Is she planning it, is that what you're saying? Oh, she's not, she just.
The city, if we, um, if it were, you know, if you have occasion.
Got you.
Anything like that.
Got you, got you. Okay.
Secondly, I want to talk about the block. One of the speakers called and, um, I was asked then. I talked with Jim, and Jim said that we already had a contract for, um, last at 2:00. I was asked to, um, extend the time to 6:00. I told him, I don't think that would be, that would even be a discussion, I don't think. I'm not speaking to everybody, but I don't think that would be, um, a good thing.
So I. Sex in the morning, you understand it? I said, I'm not speaking highly of the woman, the man.
So I asked, um, so we'll be talking, um, between 4:00 and 4:00. I told him about bringing it before the board. He said, we had a contract with the two, so we have to go on that. We ought to move the time.
Not a good half of 12:00. So I'm surprised we agreed at 2:00.
All the local establishments are by law have to close at 2:00 in the morning. Beer could lighten them, but I'm going to have to do it until 2:00.
Mayor, I'd like to hear from the chief as far as this event. I've been to it a couple times, it never passed well. I've been to that before, and it didn't seem to be out of control. I mean, to have a good time. I'd just like to know what the history of the venue is, that we had issues in the past.
Years ago, I worked at the sheriff's office. We had problems over the last couple of years. I'd say probably the last 10 years, we've had zero problems. I think taking us out of the equation, sometimes our presence can be an antagonizer to some people. So local security has been acquired by the people putting on the event. We've had zero problems the last couple of years. I also agree with you guys, as of right now, the last couple of years, people don't really clear out till 4:00 or 6:00. clear out till four or six o'clock in the morning, when it dies at two. So if we extend it to six, we're going to have people all over the streets, and some of them are not in good condition. I mean, that's, that's the only role over the last couple of years we've had, is some people leaving the event, which is not something bad on the event, because you have bad people that de-ize and stuff like that. But, uh, but that occurs anywhere that we have any kind of special. But, uh, I, me personally, I'd like to see it stay at two o'clock. And, uh, don't change, don't, 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 if it ain't broke, don't change.
I, I just want to say something, you know, we call it a block party or a street dance, but I think more of a family reunion, block party. Um, we have been there, never moved out. Um, we personally, um, I don't be out at two o'clock. I used to, and I enjoyed, especially when it was six o'clock, you know, that was a young group. But right now, um, they ask me for six, ask me about six, four, you know, I thought would be negotiable. Uh, and, uh, that's just what I thought.
And one thing I've noticed just going over there and riding through and checking things out the last couple of years, it seems to be the street dance itself has been young kids now, and, uh, the older people are just standing around eating at the vendors and standing around drinking and all that. The street dance itself, I don't think is, will change things if we move the times or whatever, because everybody's still going to hang out, you know, and drive the problem. And, uh, but the street dance itself has kind of moved to younger people, I'm talking teenagers, young kids, and then they kind of disappear about twelve, one o'clock, and the older people take over, but there's not much dancing or anything, kids on the side of that.
I just thought, I think, you know, back when we did it at six o'clock, you know, we had some businesses on, you know, that, that, that block party, several businesses make money, you know, I think that was only to let it stay open there, because we had different, um, businesses and things like that. Now, since we don't have one, I think it's more of a, you know, lack of a family reunion, big, big family reunion in Washington, so, um...
That actually starts about, about noon, then, then, hey, when everybody's setting up, setting up for everyone, hanging out.
That's it, you know, I just want to know, the thing, the other commission I want to bring before the board, um, the fact that we're the right way. I would like to say this, well, because I think it's nothing, you know, personal, nothing such as personal, um, we're going to do this.
I mean, I don't, I don't really have a problem with it either way, that there's a fine line between defining a block party and a yard party, and that's what's going to happen, if you close it down at two, you know, they're just going to disperse to the sidewalks and their yards and hang out. I'm with whatever the majority of the board agrees we should do.
I think something should be said, as far as music and everything, I think over the last couple of years, we've kind of held quiet down by repositioning and everything, but during that, even, that's why we have bars shut down, uh, these concerts and stuff at two o'clock in the morning, because you can hear the music over here on Twentieth Street, I mean, whether it's the Haudier's or the, uh, street dance.
You got to have a start and finish, so I think it's important, so. Somebody wants to make a motion to change it, they'll entertain it, if not, we'll, we'll stay at two o'clock. I'm going to get a motion to... Good. You want to make a motion to allow a street dance to, uh...
Motion to allow a street dance to continue, continue for even more.
Okay. There's a motion, there's a second.
I'll second it for discussion. Can we, can we amend that to say that the music stopped at two? I think that's going to be the only issue, noise complaints, I mean, there's never been any issues in the past, but the noise is bad.
Commissioner O'Hara, and, and I'll go with you as well, but I, I want to add one thing, if we see, we do, if we do see it's an issue, let's bump it back next year to two o'clock.
Can we put something together with it? If it is an issue, if we automatically go back to two o'clock, we have to bring that back and go to the board.
Well, it'll be according to whose opinion.
Yes, sir.
It's out of hand, so we might put...
Get your badge.
Right, and, and who's going to determine that? I guess you or the chief or, you know, if you have issues, but you guys still patrol, I mean, I, I mean, it's, you said private security, but I mean, it's, you're still around.
Yes. And we've had, you know, small, anytime you get that many people around, you have small fights and stuff.
Oh, yeah.
We, we still go in and help them handle that, but, uh, we let them handle just regular security. In the past, it was kind of like an off-duty detail, overtime detail, and, uh, like I said, it seemed to antagonize some people in the past, so we kind of let the organizers handle that themselves, and then if they needed it, we'd call them.
All right.
So, go right ahead, sir.
Uh, so, we're contemplating a two-hour window, from two to four, and now we've added, well, we're going to cut the music off at two, and you still stay at the block party or street dance for two more hours. Well, you don't have a street dance or a dance finish guy that I've ever heard of without music. You don't have a party without music. So what you're going to do, you're going to create a two-hour window that's total chaos, and the five of us aren't going to be the ones that have to deal with it. The chief of police and the police department, the sheriff's department, we're just dumping it on them for that two-hour window, and we're going to say, y'all figure it out. No music, if you still have a party, and then after four o'clock, you can't be in the street or sidewalk, but you can go right over here to this lot that's a private owned lot, which it sounds like we're doing now, so I just think that we're going down the wrong road with this. I think it's a good event, a lot of people enjoy themselves, and the, the, the group that I would be a part of are done about ten, eleven o'clock at night, and then you've got the younger people that are going to still be there, and they still want to drink and have a good time, but we're, we're literally saying, well, you can still drink, but you can't have any music after two. And that, the burden of enforcing that falls right back onto the law enforcement group, because you're going to have calls. You're going to have calls, well, that music's too loud, and they're going to say, okay, and I've been there, trust me, you're going to have to deal with the public and say, well, how loud is too loud? And it, it all falls on that person that's trying to enforce the rules that we came up with, and they're not enforceable. I think two o'clock is plenty late enough.
And, and just on top of that, in the past, when things got out of hand, we would ask the DJ to shut the music off and tell them, you know, no more music until y'all get under control, and that kind of takes that element out of it also. That's kind of what we used for punishment when the crowd got rowdy or whatever, was turn the music off and say, hey, you ain't getting no music until y'all straighten this up.
Commissioner Hoffman, the only reason I suggested that is you need a cooldown time. After the music goes off, whether it's two o'clock or four o'clock, people are still going to hang out for a couple of hours, this may encourage people to go home at two, without saying it's over. That was my, that was my idea.
All right, got a motion, and we have a second for discussion. Are you, second, on stand?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Motion and second, allow a street dance to go on till four, music stops at two. All in favor, I?
Aye.
Both?
Aye.
Both. Most passed three, too.
First three team we've had this year.
Okay, we still agree to disagree. Okay, let's move on. Boat docking request?
Yes, sir, Mayor, we had a, a gentleman approach me on Friday late in reference to utilizing boat docking space down at the, at Clifford Sims Park. We currently have two boats that are there now. Uh, the request is to approach it with an agreement for a fifty-three foot boat down there.
At six hundred and thirty-six dollars a month.
Is it a commercial boat or recreational?
No, sir, it's, it's partially on recreation.
I believe what we approved in the past was we entered into an agreement for commercial boats that had nowhere to go after the hurricane and the marina was destroyed. Uh, and if memory serves me correctly, the last time we talked about this in general, um, my indication was there was a consensus, an agreement, that we were just going to leave the two boats that we currently have, because there was a third boat at one time, I believe from Mexico Beach, that had kind of inquired, and then when they got the price, they decided not to go forward, but all those were commercial boats. And second, there was discussion to leave it like it was, because at some point you have to say, okay, we don't have the, we really don't have the bulkhead space for additional boats. I don't think we have a room for a fifty-three footer down there, and the fact that it's recreation, I don't think it even would, uh, meet the, meet the requirements of our agreement.
And I don't remember of that, uh, discussion, Commissioner Hoffman, and if that's the case, I'm, I'm a hundred percent for sticking to what we agreed on, uh, previously, which is commercial, because it, it, you can, you can see where it can really create some problems, uh, you know, leasing to a private folks, and, uh, I re, initially, I thought, well, let's make another six hundred bucks, uh, you know, help improve that area down there, but, but a good point taken that, uh, uh, we previously decided that it'd be commercial. I think at one time, uh, Tank was leaving, wanted to put his boat there, he's a commercial guy, and then the guy from Mexico Beach, so I'm, I'm fine with that. Everybody okay with that. Yeah, too, I don't, I don't...
Our agreements expired anyway.
We're, we're, we're asking forgiveness instead of permission at this time.
Yeah, that, that's the reason that I didn't want to discuss it. The last time, we kept it very brief, because there was an agreement that some of y'all voted for, I voted against signing it, uh, uh, and I still feel a hundred percent convinced we don't need their permission, uh, but anyway, that's another discussion.
I, I think, uh, I don't think they're going to bother us till, till they start working on the inside of that, you know.
But I think it would kind of shed a little light on if another fifty-three footer ties up, you know, they're going to be like, my word, how many boats are they going to bring down there? And this, we, we are...
I think that's a good decision we made. Uh, Port Authority master plan?
Yes, sir, Mayor, uh, last time I'm here, uh, we were approached yesterday by the Port Authority, uh, wanted us to move forward on a master plan with them. My understanding, it's not been passed yet at the Port Authority, so I don't have a document yet to get to you on there, so we just want to give y'all a heads up that we will be approached by the Port Authority apparently in the next few days.
And, and I talked to him about this, and, and we've been, uh, more extremely supportive, the Port Authority will continue to be supportive of the Port Authority, uh, and I'm sure we'll probably be supportive of the master plan, but according to the email we got, it's, it's not complete yet, they're working on it, but, uh, they've got incorporated edits of their own commissioners, some other improvements, uh, but we get planning our hand, I think, if we look at it, decide what we want to do, but anyway, loans, money, certainly.
That, that was my train of thought. I, I was excited to see that the port is active, because they owe the city two hundred and something thousand dollars, and I would love to get paid that debt, so I, I hope they do a wonderful job at the port, and we, I, I'll support any plan that gets the city the money to do this.
Yep, yep, and keep in mind, we're like third or fourth on that, so we're not, it'll be a while, so I'm, I'm, you know, let it play nice. All right, uh, public works?
Thank you, Mayor, the only item I would ask was, staff was approached by the public on Port Point, more specifically, something about the possibility of installing a sewer system, uh, in that development. They came back, spoke with Mr. McCool, had five interesting customers, you know, who were paying. Um, so at that point, I went forward and put together a cost estimate on what it would cost to install that, he's got that on his script, thirty-two thousand, five hundred and thirty-four dollars, and that is it. If the board wishes to move forward for five customers.
Any potential further hookups on that series?
Yeah.
Some of the construction that he gave of those five customers were, were not even to begin construction until twenty twenty-two. That's what we were talking about.
So that's those future customers that we were talking about, too?
Again, I, I can't, you know, I don't have a crystal ball, so I just know of those five, some were about to kick off, I think two or three were going to be in twenty twenty-two at some point. Now, whether that happens or not, I still don't know.
So let me get this clear, there's a total of five that needs sewer?
Yeah, it will need sewer about end of twenty twenty-two.
Twenty twenty-two?
Twenty twenty-three.
Yeah, so that's a total of five, and are there other properties in close proximity?
There's a whole subdivision.
So, so basically, when you do this, it'll just about serve a whole subdivision.
It will serve a whole.
Well, we just, we just lose laterals and all that stuff. Okay, good, that's clear to my mind.
What, what is the other option? Is there another option?
Septic.
Septic tank.
Oh, oh, okay, that's what I was unclear about.
What, what this development would do is basically, I planned on taking it back into the secluded reservoir station that we just recently accepted, dumping that subdivision in that station, pumping out.
Sounds, if it's, it'll take care of that capacity?
It will, yes, okay.
Uh, who's paying the thirty-two thousand? We are. And, and then they'll pay us the tap fees later?
They, they've committed five tap fees to, to Mike, right?
Yes, we've already collected the tap fees with the understanding that we have to get it approved before we move forward. Uh, that's why we didn't move forward until we had a serious commitment from five people, so, so...
And what, what, what tap fees?
Well, it's, it's twenty-eight hundred plus, the floor is thirty-two hundred dollars per, and, and, uh, so that's half of the cost that we received.
Yeah, I think you have half of it.
I'm going to pick out one or two customers fairly quickly, the rest will come over the next two years.
Yeah.
That's up to the board, we just want to bring it to you guys for your discussion and contemplation.
I like the idea of expansion, and I like the idea that we're ready for future customers.
I think there's a lot of areas on the Cape we should be looking at, too.
Commissioner Langston, you had a comment.
I wanted to know where, where, uh, buried in the secluded dunes, if you go down to recently paved roads to secluded dunes, as soon as you make the rounds off to your right.
Way back. Way back.
It's at the end.
If you go over...
Kevin has to break it a long way, they're not traded.
As, as far as funding, will this be used from our impact funds, you know, the base for future expansion, or is this coming out of your budget?
It would come, it would come out of the budget.
The line out of Mike to explain that.
Yeah, we cat, we, we put in a hundred and fifty thousand dollars annually for sewer line expansion and improvements, specifically targeted at the Cape. We haven't been able to get to those projects because we've been so tied up with repair.
That was my next question, buried in this.
Right.
Oh, we will.
We, we would do it in, in, under general budgeted funds.
Yeah, we would, we would, public works.
We've done this for several years before Hurricane Michael, but we've been in repair mode the last three years.
I'd like to hear from Mike, does it make financial, uh, sense, in your mind, to do, to do this project?
It does, anywhere that we can, we can make lots, uh, more interesting for developer, for development, because, you know, when you have a septic, that's going to drive some people away, but knowing that you have the sewer, so you're going to sell more of those lots because you have the city sewer, in my opinion. Um, there may be other areas out on the Cape that, that make more sense, uh, but, but this is one that's approached us and they've stepped up. I, I think we should definitely move forward, uh, and continue to look at other avenues if John is able to, to continue to work construction, uh, and add sewer lines on the Cape only makes sense for us in the long... If John is able to, to continue to work construction, uh, and add sewer lines on the Cape only makes sense for us in the long run to continue to do that.
And you can't chop up a big piece and into little pieces and use septic up a sewer. But that is more attractive because I can get a big piece, chop it up into little pieces. If there's sewer out there, they're gonna be.
And there's probably six or seven other areas we really need to look at. Over the years, I can think of, we better approach, you know, owners that are inside of the current building, that wanna connect. But we've said no because you don't want to end up with twenty-five single lines. You want to, you know, you wanna put that main line in so that it makes sense. But I think it's certainly worth investigating.
Yeah, I, I think it's a good investment for our future growth. Yes, sir.
Okay, entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Commissioner, uh, Ashbrook made the motion, Commissioner Langston, second for the, uh, Park Point Sewer, thirty-two, five, thirty-four, ninety-three, plus whatever our alley radius might fall in. So it's a little, little more than what we're seeking.
There will be a little engineering to be done for a moment.
Any more discussion? All in favor, aye. Aye, the same sign, motion passed, five and a. Uh, surface water, Mr. Larry.
Thank you, Mayor. I really don't have anything today.
I, I saw where your clarifier is about done. We have filters in. Wonderful.
Thank you.
Kevin?
Uh, just a quick update. Um, the plant's running well right now. Uh, the last meeting we had, we had everything ranked, uh, but everything's repaired. We're back up and running like we should. Secondly, we opened up Friday an RFP for the sand. Remember when I was saying that we have a zone? And we can discharge tubes. We've got all this acreage that we can't put water on because it's soaked in metal. So we got an RFP, um, and I would like to, uh, I'd like to award the bid and start working on that. Money's in the budget, so it's something we've looked, already, you know, looked at prior to. So Jim, if you can help me with, uh, explain how this thing went?
Yes, sir, Mayor. Commissioner, we opened up the bids on Friday and they were really close. If you look at your handout that we gave to you from the, from the bid opening on there, your, your low bid was actually from Weth, from Wetherton Tractor Service for forty-seven thousand dollars. Uh, our business license that we have on file actually shows about a plant city. So Bree Uen is our business license, actually contacted, uh, uh, one of the workers here to see if he could provide something with a, uh, a brick and mortar building here, town to, so they could be entitled to local preference. Unfortunately, at this point in time, we haven't seen anything that shows where they're entitled to local preference. With that being the case, with bids that are less than forty, less than fifty thousand dollars by your current local preference ordinance that's in place, Monolith would be, um, entitled to a seven percent. Seven percent entitled is three thousand, five hundred and twenty dollars, which would have their low bid going down to forty-six, seven, sixty-nine. Uh, so with that in mind, based on your ordinance on there, Monolith, uh, in our opinion, would be awarded the, um, low, low bid on this with board approval, and they would have the ability to match the low bid of forty-seven thousand.
Uh, Wetherton would have the ability to match?
No, sir. Monolith would have the ability to match.
To match the low bid. Oh, oh, yeah, okay. I got you.
Why are they getting seven percent? I read if it's fifty thousand. Oh, okay.
See, that's why I put both in there so you could see it. I had to read it twice, too. Yes, sir.
Is there a motion to award a low bid to, uh, Monolith Construction if, uh, they accept the, uh, local preference? Okay, Commissioner Ashbrook made a motion there, second. Second.
Second.
Okay. Commissioner Hoffman, second. Any further discussion? Everybody understand local preference? All in favor, aye. Aye, the same sign, motion passed, five and a. That being said, at some point in time, Mr. Attorney, we need to talk about the local preference ordinance because I understand that in neighboring areas, quite a few places don't have that anymore for some reason.
I'll look into it.
If you would, I appreciate it. All right, uh, Mr. Mike?
Uh, Mayor, as you discussed earlier, the, the pickleball courts and tennis courts have been resurfaced. The contract is coming back this week, uh, to finish by, that putting the nets and installing the nets on the pickleball courts. And also, the, uh, the new, uh, pay station at the boat launch seems to be working fine. And, um, and it seems to certainly have slimlined the process for people trying to pay. I mean, just swipe the card and go. So it seems to be working out all right.
Have you pulled any data as to how many paid in comparison to?
Yes, in, in fact, I discuss the, the numbers with the chief, uh, weekly about what's happened over the weekend. And we discuss and, and, and so they kinda do a survey to see if everything seems right. I think it was, uh, twenty paid on Friday, twenty-six on Saturday, and twenty-four this past Sunday paid launches at the ramp. So, uh, um, so we're monitoring it and, and certainly he's been having someone on duty there, um, to, to help that process. We seem to think it's, it's certainly streamlined the process and it seems to be working.
I'm gonna ask Chief to expand on that conversation a little bit when he comes up. Okay, anything else, Mr. Mike? All right, City Engineer, uh, Law Enforcement?
Yes, sir, Mayor. We did open up another bid. We opened up a bid yesterday for, that we re-advertised for, uh, two oh three Martin Luther King. And the numbers came back in the city's favor. Uh, we reduced the amount substantially in there. If it's the wishes of the board to award the contract to, uh, Rogers Brothers for RFP two thousand twenty-one dash oh five.
Entertaining a motion, one bid on the, uh, MO of, uh, property two oh three, M L K. So Commissioner Langston made the motion, second. Second, Mike, Commissioner Ashbrook. Any discussion, anybody? All in favor, aye. Aye, the same sign, motion passed, five and a. All right, now, Chief, I'll get, had a discussion with Chief today about the boat ramp. And he's, he tell you guys what they've been doing down there.
Yeah, about boat ramp. This weekend, you know, every summer, we work, uh, we have somebody work overtime and work down there at the boat ramp to kinda help things move. But this year, we started doing some education on this new ordinance. So we did up some flyer, flyers and, uh, explaining the ordinance, explaining how to take care of things, how to get your permit, all that stuff. And we handed it to each person that came to put in a boat this weekend. Uh, not only that, but social media, we've tried to cover everything because we don't have to, we don't wanna have to write anybody a ticket. Uh, we probably will have to, but at least we can say everything's been educated. The signs are up. Uh, we replaced the sign that was at Vault Cell and replaced it with a sign with the ordinance information, fine information. There is a sign that's about a, uh, I think it's about forty, forty-eight by thirty-six inch sign behind the machine, mounted to the pole with the instructions on how to pay, where to put your, uh, receipt, and even information, I believe, added information about the permits. Uh, I think ever since we started this, City Hall said that the permit list has gone up and up repeatedly because we get permits. And if anybody watching this needs to know that, uh, permit to Gulf County residents is free. All you have to do is go fill out a paperwork, get a free yearly permit. You can do a launch of boat anytime. Don't have to worry about, uh, paying or the receipt or anything. If you don't, you have to pay. If you don't have that permit, don't care where you live, you're gonna get a ticket. And, uh, we worked it this weekend. We're gonna, uh, work it this coming weekend and just do education. And then, uh, Memorial Day weekend, it's not more educated at this point. It's gonna be in, uh, full stride there. So, uh, that's where we sit at the boat ramp. Couple of things that I need to talk about is, uh, Sergeant Cheryl Morrison, uh, been working with us now for almost two years. Was promoted to sergeant, I don't know, about six weeks ago. About three weeks ago, she was diagnosed with breast cancer. Uh, yesterday, she had a bilateral, uh, mastectomy done. I think I'm saying that right. Uh, and, uh, they removed some, about three of her lymph nodes. Uh, I found out after I talked to the mayor last night, I talked to her husband and he, he had told me that two of those lymph nodes had cancer. Found out it was only one. And, uh, so now they're just, uh, talking about sending her to a oncologist and maybe go through, uh, chemo and not have to go through radiation. If you have to go through radiation, whole different ballgame. But, uh, everything seems to be looking up. I mean, as long as none of those other lymph nodes has cancer. She's, uh, she's very tough and I wouldn't doubt in about two or three weeks, her being back to work because she's, she's that mean. Uh, other than that, uh, our JAG, yearly JAG grant, we've used it for several years to buy vehicles. We're kinda called up for a year or two on buying vehicles and luckily we are because this year, they say because of COVID, the JAG grant went way down. We were somewhere around twenty-four thousand and we would use like ten thousand of, uh, budget money to buy vehicles. We went down to eighteen thousand and some change this year. So we would have to spend a ton. So what we're gonna do is we're gonna replace some equipment that we've not been able to because it costs so much for probably twenty years and, uh, try to buzz that around. But having said that, I need you guys, I believe I need you guys' permission from the mayor to sign the fifty-one percent letter, uh, between us and the county because the sheriff's office gets fifty percent and we get fifty percent. And I had to have that in the date, so at the meeting, I gotta go get that letter and have the mayor down. Other than that, I think that's all.
And you wanna bring up, uh, the, uh, her vehicle and putting a, putting breast cancer awareness ribbon on, on her patrol car to?
She doesn't know. She doesn't know, so I'm gonna try to keep it quiet. But, uh, the guy that makes our patches is also friends with Cheryl. And he called me and wanted to, uh, make some commemorative patches. Law enforcement patches are highly collectible. We probably get ten liter, ten letters a week. People requesting a free patch and we usually make them pay for it because they are expensive to make. He's gonna make a run of one hundred patches and, uh, we're paying for it out of our pockets, not department money. And because of rules on us, he's gonna sell them because he's a part of this patch network. And, uh, we're gonna use that money that he sells from that to, uh, get her vehicle restripped in a commemorative breast cancer awareness stripe package. Basically, replace a lot of the blues and stuff with pink and put the breast cancer ribbon on the vehicle. It'd be really nice. If y'all wanna see it, I, I actually have some pictures in my phone from the, the D C L guy. So none of that's coming from actual budgetary stuff. It's kinda, we're funding it ourselves. What's the cost for, uh, the cost of the patches is three hundred and the D C L's three fifty. And, uh, we all chipped in on that. And having said that, I mean, we're actually putting in a memo today because she's only been here two years. She doesn't have the like forty-five hour sick time. We're doing this sick time pool for her that we're all chipping in. So we know she'll be getting the paycheck for us however long she'll be out.
Is that just for the police department or the whole city?
I, I believe the whole city can, can put into it. Three of us at the police department have been there long enough where we've got a pretty good amount. So we were all three gonna put the burden on the three of us. But I didn't know if anybody else within the city that's loaded up with sick time wants to chip in, we, we'd appreciate it.
Well, I think we need to send out a memo to the employees and explain what's going on. I think we'll cover her sick time.
Yeah, I think so, too. That, that's what was important to us, take care of her where she didn't have to worry about anything.
Chief, before you strap her vehicle, is she the type of person that would appreciate that or would she not wanna draw attention to herself?
She is absolutely, uh, when she was at Wattelet County Sheriff's Office, she served seventeen years over there. She had a pink patrol car there. She's like, everything she owns is pink, her handcuffs.
Not her personality.
She was supporting this, she was supporting breast cancer awareness before she was ever diagnosed. She's always mad because when she left Wattelet County, they gave her her pink patrol car to somebody else and they rented it, so.
Any questions for the chief? All right, Chief, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, do we, do we need a motion on the fifty-one percent letter or?
I'm not sure, but it wouldn't hurt. I haven't seen it, but it wouldn't hurt to do it.
Well, she's gonna approve the fifty-one percent agreement.
Second. All right. All in favor, aye. Aye, the same sign, motion passed, five and a. Thank you. All right, Ms. Pierce?
Yes, sir. Under City Clerk, we have grant update, City Hall. We have been working with our grant people to try to come up with something to possibly provide funding for a new city hall. The closest thing we're seeing right now is a USDA grant that could be as much as sixty, forty, possibly. Didn't know if Yalvin does continue pursuing that or what your thoughts are. Need some direction.
Uh, sixty, forty, sixty percent grant, forty percent loan, I assume. And the loan would be, Jim, you got info on the terms of the loan?
Not, not all the terms, Mayor. Our grant folks said it looks like the best thing going out there, if you wanna do a city hall, would be a USDA loan. There's not a lot of options out there to build a city hall, uh, type facility. But they wanna get some direction from, do we wanna reach out to them to get a task order to go to USDA and come back with those terms for you? We don't even know if they would give you over two or three million dollars. But looking at what we've seen so far, looking at what Panama City Beach done, we think you're somewhere with construction costs. We're thinking you're somewhere in the neighborhood of four million dollars. Okay? And it looks like the best you could possibly get is a sixty-five, uh, thirty-five grand loan. But we just wanna get some direction from the board to find out, okay? We're kind of at a crossroads. We got a piece of property we got from, uh, the legislature bought for us. So we have the property. Do we wanna go ahead and move forward to get a set of plans, show we're ready? And do we wanna reach out to USDA to see if there's money available or what's our plan for that? We just need to start getting a plan together.
The building was built nineteen forty-nine.
We, uh, all right, forty percent, uh, what'd you say? How many, uh, four, four million, that's one point six million. At a, uh, really probably reasonable terms.
Currently interest rates are in the two percent range.
I think we could afford it personally. I think we could afford it, so. I, I'm first, I'm ready to move.
And I think the first step's gonna be, let's get a shovel-ready plan. Let's figure out what we want because we really don't know if it's four million or six.
We don't.
So I wanna keep on moving forward. We need to move forward and get some shovel-ready plans.
Wow, sounds like I'm the only one that's gonna be Debbie Downer. Mike, my train of thought is, yes, we need a new city hall. There is no doubt. The building, it, I think, has issues, probably the building, old and all that. The timing is what concerns me. Uh, it's hard for me to talk about building a new building for a million dollars. And we're trying to solve why is our water rate so high? And I think we're gonna get beat over the head. Uh, I remember in Panama City years back, uh, the school board, we needed a building. They built a brand new building and they were, on one side, they were proud of that building the same way we would be. And then the people come out and, and really raised cane because the teachers were making such lousy salaries. So they were saying, so you spent four million dollars on a building, but you can't afford to pay your teachers a fair rate of pay. So I have no problem with moving forward with a plan. But I just wanna be very cautious about the message that we send because the county's gonna take it and run with it. I've already heard a couple of the county commissioners say, you know, they keep saying stuff about now's the time not to spend money on a ci, a city hall, you know? But that's my own.
It's not gonna be a good time for the future either. So we, you know, we gotta fish and cut bait and I think we need, we need to move forward, at least with the plan. And then we can, we may down the road find if we've stabilized the water rates and not having to raise them, then we can still build a city hall. So, I mean, all these grant opportunities not always be out there. We're under served and we, we had the problem with the storm and we're kinda looking favorably, uh, folks are looking favorably on us. folks are looking favorably on us, so I, I think we need to move. I guess you need a motion, is that gonna require money?
At this point in time, I think what we're looking at is we need to go back and get a task order from them. We just wanted to find out from you if you want to do that. And then we also need, what we need to do is pull that set of plans out and we need to get with our engineers to find out, okay, what are we looking at to sit down? Do, do we need to go to you, our architect? What do we need to move forward? So we'll bring you back to you. We just wanted, we wanted to find out what y'all did before we done a bunch of.
Yeah, thanks, Commissioner Ashbrook. We got a full set of plans from the, from the beach.
It's a very good start, yeah.
So we've got, we've got shovel-ready plans if we wanted to exactly copy them. That might be too big for us or nothing, but I think they're built theirs for three million.
Somewhere around that.
Somewhere like that. So, so anyway, I think the consensus is let's move.
Okay, we'll keep pumping information to you on it.
Okay.
The only other item I had next meeting, which would be June one, we will have a reception at eleven-thirty. Then have the swearing in of the three returning commissioners or mayor commissioner at the meeting. That makes everyone's approval.
No, our next meeting.
Yes, sir, June one.
Yeah, sounds.
Just please remember to bring your Bible and family and take care of the rest of it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we made the citizen soup for a long time. Anybody wants to talk, any citizens? They going once, going twice? Okay. Too late, knock. You gonna wait, okay. All right, another citizen, uh, discussing items. I think Commissioner Langston's first today.
Um, my head call from the, that's the call team morning. So, what you want to inform is, uh, what you want to do is, uh, golf carts down at the boat ramp. And what you want to do is, uh, escort the, uh, party people to escort them actually to boat. You want to know what's going on, uh, from the building.
I think that's a great moneymaker. I don't know if the chief, uh, they just have to have a sticker and have to be of age to drive it, is that what you're saying? That's correct. And I've said from day one that somebody would make amends if they did that. Especially if they put the cheerleader thing on it, yeah. So just all the golf cart regulation, they have to follow those.
That's correct.
Right. That's what it deal, okay.
Yes, Mayor, um, sorry, guys, I have three things. Um, I know. Put on your desk in front of you, uh, the copy of a request for a letter of support for a grant. Pioneer Bay CDC, the approach, uh, with students in University of West Florida to conduct surveys. Uh, and the EPA wants to give a grant in the amount of two hundred thousand dollars. There's no matching request at all. Um, and I'm gonna let Chester come and tell you a little bit more about what it's about, but it is a direct benefit to the citizens of the community.
All right.
Thank you, Commissioner, for this. Chester Davis, President of PAC, North Port St. Joe, and Board Member of the CDC. What we're requesting from the city is a letter of endorsement in order for this plant to go forward. Uh, what this grant is all about is to focus on North Port St. Joe. Number one, the damage of the impact of, uh, what hurricane might have given to some of the homes over there. Number two, the homes that still have moles in them and mold problem of it. And a strategy that was designed and implemented to assist residents with repair to their home. Just like the Florida, Florida, uh, housing thing does. But it's not, uh, associated with that at all. Uh, there's issues with stormwater rain from Avenue A and B. Uh, and also in some of the others over there, this is a city that would have to understand what that's that and that stormwater is doing. Then they're gonna have some students that come in from the University of West Florida and will conduct a survey of the residents living in those hurricane, uh, areas. Uh, the air quality will be checked, homes with mold issues in all the homes throughout the neighborhood. And they're gonna be in collaboration with the EPA agencies. We have invited them to come also to be in Port St. Joe. Now, what this grant is gonna do also is, it's a two-year grant and it's gonna provide some valuable information for, for, for the presentation, which will be made at the, uh, city and the county commission meetings and other public meetings. The total grant amount is two hundred thousand dollars. The fund will be managed by the Pioneer Bay CDC certified public county. Their environmental protection agency will provide oversight for the grant and require quarterly reports. Pioneer Bay CDC deals a five oh one C three tax exemption, non-property registration within general revenue service in the state of Florida. Uh, the grant does not require matching funds. In other words, it won't cost the city anything, all right? This grant also is an effort of the EPA in helping address the stormwater issue in North Port St. Joe. Uh, often we have to reach out to get help in that areas. Not because we don't think we're getting it from the city, but because we're trying to do something within our community. So we're reaching out, uh, to other agencies that, uh, you know, help us get grants to, to all formations in North Port St. Joe. That's why we want to, uh, matter of approval, all.
Okay, I, uh, I'll entertain a motion for, for the letter. Do you have a stop letter drafted or anything that you've got something?
Yes, part of the package.
Okay, very good, all right. Uh, entertaining motion and Commissioner Ashbrook made that motion. Our second, Commissioner Lowery for city to write a letter of support for a two hundred thousand dollar grant for the, uh, Pioneer Bay.
Right, thank you.
So, uh, motion second, any discussion? All in favor, aye. Aye, the same sign, motion passed, five and a half. Will you give that to?
I give you a copy and.
Uh, Michelle.
Okay. All right, next thing I have, uh, put on in front of you all is the meeting schedule for the Florida League of Cities. I have been reappointed to the, to the.
Excuse me a minute, Commissioner Langston, you gotta go to work. And, uh, it'll be, we won't talk about you while you call.
Uh, but what I have in front of you is, uh, the schedule of the Florida League of Cities. I've been reappointed to the Land Use and Economic Development Board for the State Florida League. Um, and I have a meeting coming up on June eleventh. It's just a one night, I'll come in the night before and sit through the meeting from ten to three and then come back home. Uh, so I'm just asking for approval, really for the first two meetings on this schedule, one in June and one in July. Okay, they're at the higher agency in Orlando.
Okay.
I don't know whether we need to vote on travel or not, I know we have it in the budget.
I think it's best to, uh, at least bring it up to the board and get, get approval. Anything you can do representative, I, I think is good.
I'll make a motion for the June eleventh and July sixteenth meeting.
Okay, there's a motion. Second, Commissioner Lowery, everybody, any more discussion?
Can you get a cheaper room if you agreed to two double bans? Would that help?
Do you want to come?
No.
It's not that fun.
Okay, I'll, I'll go ahead.
The only question I have is about the annual.
So the annual is on this letter, it's August twelfth, um, and it goes usually Wednesday, Thursday, Friday.
What's the deadline for runs?
Uh, there is no, oh, the cutoff block is June twenty-fourth. So we could decide on any of your likes.
Well, that's for the annual.
So next thing you do is, yeah.
Oh, I, I don't have a problem with, uh.
I'll add that to my motion to just approve these top three trips and the last one for all of us.
And then anybody that wants to go, uh, we'll give the gentleman mic and, uh, get info from Michelle, probably has info on it, so. Okay, uh, Mr. Mike, you second, Commissioner. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Got the same sign, motion asked for.
And the last thing, I promise, uh, now that we voted on the second meeting and adopted the Penn Street property, all in, um, it's time to take a step forward. I said I would bring it up every meeting until we do.
Yep.
And so I'm not gonna say, let's think about it, let's do something next meeting and then maybe go for an RFQ and see what people think we should do with the property. And at this point, I don't know that we even need to restrict it to a hundred and seventy-two because it doesn't look like the county's gonna, it's gonna work with us anyway.
Like I said in the meeting, I'd be happy to forget twenty out there, but.
That's how you do it right now.
We need workforce hourly and, and we, uh, we can test the waters, see, see if anybody's interested. Now, I probably be restricted for that, they're gonna get free dirt.
So I guess what I'd ask is if everybody would give counsel and kind of say what they would like. You know, I don't want to see the costs over a certain amount of money. I don't want to see the increase, like if they sell it, they can't increase over a certain month percent per year. If we all give them our ideas and start building an RFQ over soon.
Sure. That good with you guys? So we have strings attached to it before they grab the dirt, not doing it.
Yeah.
The north front.
Yeah, and, and, uh, Brinsport, uh, could be a pretty good example because it's done well out there and have a certain, quite a few restrictions on that property about selling and so on and so forth. So, uh, I think that's great, yeah, let's do it.
And that's all I have, Mayor.
Okay, all right, Commissioner Lowery.
I'm good.
All right. Mr. Hoffman.
I don't have anything else.
Okay, uh, only thing I've got is we got an invitation, the board did, and I'm sure the system, the community too, that the Palm Breeze Beauty Bar at three nineteen Reed Avenue celebrates their first year anniversary. They opened up last year in the middle of the pandemic and couldn't have any flooding or anything like that. So today is their first anniversary at four thirty and they'll cut the ribbon at five thirty. And that's, uh, directly across from the, uh, Fort Theater is where that is. So, uh, that's, that's all I have and I'd say if I was a person in the box today, so if you'd like to go, anybody else, please go. I don't have anything else. Nobody else, we'll stand adjourned.